Okay, everybody here. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been sent to the home news tribune, the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on September 18th, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 231, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on September 18th, 2016, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Please speak into the microphones if you come up to speak. And assistive listening devices are available. Rosie, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell Mittler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Here.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held April 17th, 2018, May 1st, 2018, and May 15th, 2018, as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
All right, let's start with our council reports. And Stephanie, I will start from your end.
Sure. In recreation, we are currently in the midst of youth soccer, flag football, buddy ball soccer. And we just began our new art class, which is mass making and sculpture, tennis, table tennis for ages 11 through, for ages eight through 11, and ages 12 to 18. This week, we began our junior robotics and engineering class also. And we began rehearsals for our fall theater program, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang Junior, which will be performed in January. We are running our free, that's free, because that's, I like to say it again, because recreation normally doesn't have that many free programming, open basketball for boys and girls in both fifth and sixth grades, seventh grades, all the way through high school. But registration is mandatory. Fall Adele evening programs are Adele Open Basketball and Beginner and Advanced Volleyball, Fitness for All, Tai Chi and Israel Dance. Our Adele Open Soccer runs on Sunday mornings. And last but not least, and I'm going to bring this up again, next council meeting, the Halloween Festival and Parade will begin at the high school gym on October 28th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., so please save that date. And like us on Facebook, @HighlandParkNJRecreation to keep up with all of the recreation programs that I just mentioned. In senior services, our October luncheon will be held Tuesday, October 16th at noon. And entertainment will be provided by the Highland Park Blue Grass Band. Our Rite Aid Pharmacy will be conducting a flu shot clinic at the center on Wednesday, October 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And our next trip to Atlantic City will be October 23rd. And please call the center for more details. This is open to the entire community. I know some residents did come out and write down with some of the seniors, so please call the center for more details. October 27th and 28th, we will be having Operation Take Back event from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to collect all unused and unwanted medicines safely. And I know this is mostly in public safety, but it is being held at the Senior Youth Center. And please, please stay up to date with our newsletter and our calendars, because November and December becomes very busy months at the center. The Arts Commission is working on their Windows of Understanding with the New Brunswick Arts Council, the Art Walk, and a spoken word justice concert that we are planning to have at the Reform Church. And we're looking forward to teaming up with the Human Relations Commission for this event. So more details to follow on that. Last but not least, I do want to mention that October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so don't forget to schedule your mammograms. About one in eight U.S. women and one in 1,000 U.S. men will develop breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. And being proactive in this fight is crucial. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hale.
Thank you very much. Just a few notes. I just wanted to remind everybody that Highland Park gives a hoot, and the Highland Park Food Pantry are always in need of donations, of monetary and otherwise. They're two great organizations that are really a credit to Highland Park, and they survive on the help of people every single day. So if you have some extra to give, those are two great places to give it. I also wanted to recognize and thank the work of the Immigration and Refugee Commission. Very shortly, there'll be a resolution coming forward about Highland Park being an inclusive and welcoming community. It's an update of a resolution that we've discussed before. We're very excited about it. It'll be posted shortly on the website in a draft form. We'll have some public comment on it. But I would like to thank Letitia and John, in particular, for their hard work on this as well. And then lastly, those two new members who will be appointed tonight to the Human Relations Commission, Reverend Kermit Ross and Tammy Russ Fishbein. So thank you very much to both of them for volunteering.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Feels like it's been a while since we've been here.
Yes, doesn't it?
So last month now, we had the biggest and the best arts in the park ever in the history of Highland Park. Over just the past eight years that I've known, our arts festival has become one of the most prestigious jury arts festivals in the state of New Jersey. We have five times the number of vendors than we used to have. There were 250 vendors at our arts in the park. And the weather was absolutely perfect. Special thanks to Director of Main Street, Rebecca Hirsch, and Kim Van Arthos and Javier from Main Street. Every year, you put on an amazing, an amazing show for us, because it is a show. It's just a wonderful entertaining event. And to all the volunteers that helped out, and many were there. Moving right along this past weekend, an amazing garage sale, two days of garage sales. This helps our sustainability as well. And although I swore I wasn't going to buy anything, I still did. And nonetheless, it was, it was great. My kids got a lot of stuff, too. Special thanks to Ballard-Hutkin from Century 21 for organizing this every year. And to top it all off, our Harvest Festival Block Party and A Taste of Highland Park, which is our restaurant promotions event, special thanks to Siobhan and Steve from Pinos. And special thanks to Public Works, our fire, police, fire, and EMS for helping us out at all of these events. I'd like to congratulate Blue Horse for opening its doors two weeks ago. We're delighted to have a new popular restaurant in town, and the reviews are all very positive. I'd like to thank Councilman George, Tina Weisshaus, Chair of Sustainable Highland Park, and our Borough Administrator Terry Hovere for working on a policy to reduce our plastic bag use in town. And last week, they organized for a meeting with our merchants. And Tina went door to door to the merchants up and down the street several times, and spoke to the merchants. And we talked about the reduction of plastic bags, that they can give out alternative bags in their store, or maybe not even, maybe people should be bringing reusable bags with them. And several merchants came, and we had a wonderful meeting here, and we had an opportunity to discuss what their needs are. And it's interesting, because different, different businesses do in fact have different needs. So it was really great to get, to get the, to get that input from them, and we look forward to having more discussions with them about this. Yes, I did. Okay, no problem. He just wrote me out to thank Pinos. I said Siobhan and Steve from Pinos. It's okay, no problem, but I thank you so much. Our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee last week held our annual bike rodeo after school at the Bartle School. Although there was some rain, we were still able to attract nearly 50 families. And we took the kids to an obstacle course, taught them some rules of the road. There were bicycle checks by MedCycle and lots of giveaways. Special thanks to Colleen Wharton, who organized the whole event, and she did a great job last year. And again, this year, thank you, Colleen. Thanks to Principal Benjamin and Mrs. Lydic and all the others at Bartle School who helped put this together. Thanks to Safe Rats to School, New Jersey. Again, MedCycle, these are an amazing group of EMS-trained service workers who work on bicycles. So if there's a big event, like a crowd, they can get through the crowd with their medical gear and help somebody. So they're a wonderful group of folks, and expertly trained, and they were actually checking the safety of individual bicycles. Keep Mental Sex Moving helped us out, and the Bartle PTO was there. Thanks to Diana Storacci at Robert Wood Johnson Trauma Center as well. She was giving out helmets to kids that didn't have them. And tomorrow morning, we're hosting Walk Your Child to School Day for Bartle School. That's at 7:40 in the a.m., where everybody's going to meet in the Stop and Shop parking lot. And lastly, just a couple things on the agenda with regard to redevelopment. Items 30, 31, and 32, we're finally getting the money from the state to pay for the cleanup of some properties on the avenue. So we're very excited to be able to move on with that. And also, we'll be naming a conditional redeveloper for the property at 31 River Road. We've been working on that very closely with the neighbors there, and we're very excited to move ahead with that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. This month, October, begins fire prevention month. And so, the Highland Park Fire Department will be hosting an open house on this coming Thursday, the 11th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Come out and learn about fire prevention, especially bring the little ones to learn more. The street will be closed, between Benner and Mansfield will be closed. And to facilitate the open house, they'll have demonstrations, and so kids can see how to prevent a fire. And it's an awesome opportunity for everyone to learn about what to do and what not to do in case there is a fire in the home. Also, it's a good reminder that, to remind all of us to change our batteries in our devices, such as our radon detector and our, and our fire alarms in our home. So please make sure that these things are done, that we do our public safety check in our homes to keep everyone safe. With that said, Councilmember Kim mentioned this before, that we're having Operation Take Back, October 27th and October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that will be at the Senior Youth Center on Sixth Avenue. So anyone that has medication that they need to get disposed of, please bring them in, and someone will be there from our police department to collect and dispose properly, dispose of unused medication. With that being said, the Highland Park Police Department would like to remind all residents to please lock your vehicles, lock your doors. When you are, when you're leaving your vehicles, please make, remove all valuables from your vehicle and lock them before you go in. Also, lock your doors. We have had people who have been reporting that there has been burglaries. We have seen a rash of burglaries in some very affluent communities throughout the state. It's been on the news all the time. And one of the things that they say is that people are leaving their vehicles unlocked. So let's all be safe in every way and lock our vehicles up. I want to just give you a quick overview of our police blotter for the month of September. And they were quite busy. There was 1,403 calls made to our police department, 77 of which was ambulance, nine was assault. We had two burglaries, lock up, please. And we had nine motor vehicle burglaries. So please, see, it's important that we need to keep our vehicles and our properties locked up. CDS, we had two, criminal mischief, one, disorderly person, three. We had 22 disputes, we had nine harassment, two missing persons. Motor vehicle accidents was up by 29. We had three Narcan deployment. Shoplifting was three, trespassing was two, theft 16, and welfare adult check, we had 28. So again, let's keep each and every one of us safe and make sure that we're doing the right things to keep all of us safe, locking our vehicles, closing our doors, and being good neighbors, as we know we are. Also, last month, we had the opening of the Zone 16 Center. It was an awesome event. I want to thank each and every sponsor that came out. I want to thank each and every teen that participated. They, they were just, they met the opening with glee. It was an awesome event. And even tonight, that is why I was driving in, I could see the teens leaving the center, and there were lots of them. I've stopped in a couple of times, and it's always busy over there. They are totally enjoying the facility. They're loving everything that's being offered. And again, thanks to each and every one for making this possible. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Fine.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to take this opportunity to wish a very happy birthday to one of my neighbors on South First Avenue, Helen Solomon. She's been living in Highland Park for almost eight decades, and she just turned 100. And I had the honor of attending her birthday party yesterday. Now, while there is no resolution or ordinance on our agenda this evening related to the possible sale of marijuana, and the council has not discussed this issue, I would like to share with you now my position on the matter. First, let me say that I support the bill that State Senator Ron Rice has sponsored that would remove criminal penalties for possession of small amounts of marijuana, but would not create a system that will legalize marijuana in New Jersey. In Highland Park, our form of government is the borough form of government, under which the municipal governing body is empowered to acquire and dispose of property, make contracts, tax, and enact laws, and provide for the general health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. As Chair of the council's Finance Committee, I am duly concerned about tax stabilization. It is for Highland Park residents' health, safety, and welfare that I am concerned about the likely legalization of recreational marijuana in New Jersey and the possibility of marijuana being sold in Highland Park. I know that there are those who believe that if recreational marijuana is legalized, then we should take advantage of being able to tax it at the local level. I disagree. I don't believe that we should be focusing on the potential revenue that a local marijuana, marijuana tax would bring. Besides the fact that I am not convinced that the potential revenue will solve our tax stabilization issue, I believe that we should be guided by science and our concern for the safety and health of our children. There is scientific evidence that has proven that marijuana with its active ingredient, tetrahydrocannabinol, also known as THC, poses serious risks, particularly for developing brains. Also, smoking marijuana produces cancer, causing toxins and chronic lung disease, may lower one's IQ, and cause brain cell damage, mental illness, and motor vehicle accidents. In addition, I know from a law enforcement perspective, our police chief has concerns about the possible legalization of recreational marijuana. So for these reasons, as my colleagues and I begin to discuss this issue, I will be advocating for the council to adopt an ordinance to prevent businesses in Highland Park from selling marijuana, both medical and recreational, and marijuana paraphernalia. I support doctor recommended medical marijuana. I understand that medical marijuana, which is already legal to some degree in New Jersey, may be helpful to some of our residents. However, I believe that it is unnecessary to have medical marijuana sold in Highland Park, especially considering that two of the six medical marijuana dispensaries already existing in New Jersey are not so far from here. The Breakwater Treatment and Wellness Dispensary is in Cranberry, and you can obtain doctor recommended medical marijuana from the Garden State Dispensary, which is in Woodbridge, and less than 10 miles away from Highland Park. There are those who will certainly point out that any of our neighboring municipalities may choose to have marijuana sold within their boundaries, and will raise the question that if every bordering municipality is permitting the sale of marijuana, then what difference will it make if this governing body were to choose to ban the sale of marijuana in Highland Park? To that, I say that I believe that the less accessible marijuana is to our youth, the better. I also believe that we do not have to rely on the sale of marijuana to revitalize our downtown economy. I think we can do better, and that there are already potential plans for mixed-use redevelopment that we must continue to focus on to make a reality in downtown Highland Park, which will help revitalize it. Now, I'm sharing with you my thoughts on the issue as a resident of this borough, as a father of adolescents, and as a council member, but I thought it would be helpful to hear from someone who works in the area of prevention. This past March, I attended a press conference on Raritan Avenue outside a former vaping shop, where Congressman Frank Pallone, municipal leaders, and health advocates called on the Food and Drug Administration to take action to regulate drooling and protect children from its harmful effects. At that gathering, I had the privilege to meet Diane Litterer, the CEO and Executive Director for the New Jersey Prevention Network. I recently reached out to Ms. Litterer about the issue of legalization of marijuana in New Jersey, to see if she would be able to come to a council meeting and discuss the issue. While she wasn't available to attend the meeting this evening, she was kind enough to put me in contact with one of her colleagues who is here with us tonight. I want to thank Mara Carlin, Coordinator of Coalition and Community Programs at the Wellspring Center for Prevention in East Brunswick, for coming here tonight to speak during the public comment period, and to tell us about some statistics and other lessons learned from states in which marijuana has been legalized, and some other New Jersey municipalities that have passed ordinances to ban sales of marijuana. I'm well aware that there are different sides to this issue. I've just shared my position as it stands today, that even though marijuana will likely be legalized in New Jersey, I would vote in favor of an ordinance banning the sale of marijuana in Highland Park out of concern for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, and especially our children. It's my hope that especially in the political climate in which we live today, that we, as residents of Highland Park, may disagree with each other regarding this issue, but that we will engage, all engage, in a civil discourse about the subject and listen to each other. With that said, I hope and urge all Highland Park residents who are concerned about the issue of marijuana being sold in Highland Park to attend our Borough Council meetings and make your voices heard. Thank you.
Okay. Borough Council President, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you. Following up on what Councilwoman Welkowitz said, I want everybody to know that there's a public meeting next Tuesday, the October 16th, at 7:30 in the Senior Rec. Community Center for a public presentation on the Bring Your Own Bag Ordinance, which is what the Plastic Bag Reduction Ordinance is called, so that the public can actually hear all the moving parts, how it's planned to work, what it sets out to accomplish, what it doesn't do, who would be affected. And I think it's important for the public to actually get that information in a dedicated situation where the whole meeting is about that, and you'll hear from Sustainable Highland Park, from members of council, members of the administration, members of the public and merchants. There'll be a second public presentation as well, which hasn't been scheduled yet. We're looking at the schedule for possibly early November, so that there are at least two public airings on that. But the first one, just so everybody knows, is going to be this coming Tuesday at 7:30. Also, I noticed, driving back from work, that some people may not have gotten the message, but we've done our best to get the word out that this week, recycling is canceled this week, simply because it's a short week, so the DPW was off yesterday for the holiday. That leaves us four days left, and out of the things that we have to accomplish, bulk trash after the townwide yard sale is our biggest year for bulk trash, our biggest day of the year for bulk trash. Recycling or garbage, we figured that the one thing that wouldn't go bad is recycling. So we, this year, we've changed things around. If you recall, the last couple of years, the DPW had a real hard time accomplishing everything that they need to do in the fall and get to bulk trash removal. So it was a couple of weeks before we got it done. This week, we hope that it'll all be done by Thursday afternoon. Today was garbage pickup in the North Side, the Business District, and the Triangle. Friday is trash pickup for the South Side. The other two days, tomorrow and Thursday, are all bulk trash pickup. I noticed that they really did a knockout job on getting a lot of it done, and we really think it will be done this week. And in addition, when the trucks get back from the morning garbage run, we'll be able to put more trucks on it to accomplish everything this week. At the next Borough Council meeting, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee will be presenting the Community Forestry Plan. That is, for every five years, we have to re-up our renewal with the state with regard to our Community Forestry Plan. It expires this year, so we're going to have a presentation. This year, it is much more important, though, even though it funds our grants for Shade Tree replacement and maintenance from the state, we have to deal with something that everybody's been hearing a little bit about, the Emerald Ash Bore, which is an infestation, a bug, that has slowly worked its way into New Jersey over the last 20-some years, and is calculated to destroy all the ash trees within five years in New Jersey. It is pretty much a 100% loss. The borough has assembled a plan. We're actually one of the, working with the county to try and develop a plan with them as well. But right now, we have our plan in the more than formulated and less than 100% complete. That's why, at the next meeting, you're invited to come out and hear it. It's not just for the town's ash trees. There is a significant impact on any ash trees that you have on your private property. And one of the first things that STACK is doing is getting out information so you can identify them, and members will be available to do that as well. So that presentation will be at the next meeting for Borough Council, and then we will also have public presentations solely dedicated to that as well. The Environmental Commission met last week and discussed the cleaning, the continuing cleanup at Cleveland Avenue. Some people might have heard that one of the dust monitors gave an unusually high reading. It was true. However, a truck bringing in clean fill dumped the clean fill right immediately next to and onto the monitor, so that the reading did spike. However, it was clean fill. It was not beryllium or iridium or anything else. We also discussed a report from the Meadows Trail Crew, which reports to the Environmental Commission, about the Reform Church's green worship program that did an art presentation, an ephemeral art presentation down at the Meadows Trail, which was coordinated through the Arts Commission and the Arts Collective. We actually called a meeting of all those players and the representatives of the Native Plant Sanctuary and the Meadows Trail to work out the details, because it's a very environmentally sensitive area. It went pretty well. There were some glitches, but hopefully, if the program is going to run next year, a little more planning and training by the participants will, will resolve that. The Meadows Trail volunteers who report to the Sustainable Highland Park have nearly completed an observation deck on the trail. That observation deck was a donation to the borough and did not take either grant or taxpayer money. It's overlooking the lower parts of the trails. It's up on the hill where you first walk in and go up. Overlooks towards the river and down into the, to the low-lying plain. Very lovely spot. Very lovely spot. It's almost done and we're trying to work on coordinating with DPW to put some of the old outdated park benches, which are stacked behind DPW, in the area as well once the observation deck is done. I'd also like to share some observations on the marijuana problem, but just for a moment, the borough should be aware that even as far back as when Jeff Sessions, our illustrious Attorney General of the United States, announced that the federal government was going to prevent all states from regulating marijuana and they would crack down on even small distributors and users as bad as the worst first-degree offenders from the drug cartels, that we agreed that we would wait to see what the developments were. Well, maybe we're at the spot where the state is now focusing on it again and as you know, the state has litigation with the federal government with regard to their program and its enforcement. There are three parts to the marijuana problem that the borough needs to discuss in the future and discuss with the public in what you've heard me call all the time, the public discourse, which is the group of all of us talking as a community of what our community should be. The first part is medical marijuana. Medical marijuana has some detractors, but having sat just a few years ago with my mother as she died from cancer, my brother who died from cancer, my sister who survived two cancer events, all of my aunts who died from cancer, and three of my four uncles who died from cancer, it might have brought the palliative relief that they didn't have in the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, and even into the 2000s because even hospice care doesn't necessarily cure anything. The second is the decriminalization of marijuana offenses. Next week, as a prosecutor for a number of municipalities, I'll be at the judiciary's hearings regarding the dismissal of warrants for crimes that were prosecuted that are over 15 years old. Part of the problem with the decriminalization of marijuana, when I was a college freshman in 1968 in West Virginia, one of the people on my dorm floor was arrested for a marijuana joint and spent 10 years in prison for possession of marijuana. West Virginia is now the same state that is one of the leaders in trying to debate the legalization of marijuana because it has the second worst opioid crisis in the nation outside of southeastern Ohio or southwestern Ohio, which shows you how times change. The decriminalization affects not only immigrant families, immigrant populations. It has a significant impact on our own people who've been here for generations in urban settings and in suburban and in rural settings. And the third thing is the issue of recreational marijuana. And I recognize that it has two particular parts. One, with a nod to the lieutenant, is the enforcement. I prosecute drug-induced, driving under the influence cases. They are very difficult. They require specialized training of officers, which is ongoing. They require special lab tests. They require special equipment. They're very expensive to prosecute and let's be blunt, Highland Park could ban it all. But the amazing thing is, is there's a road that goes through town and it goes into Edison. There's another one that comes out of New Brunswick. There's another one that goes into Piscataway. So banning marijuana in Highland Park, unless you're going to set up roadblocks on River Road, Route 27, and the bridge, is not going to stop the marijuana use in Highland Park. It's also recognized that there is marijuana use in not only the high school, but the middle school. And it's against the law right now, so we need to balance all of these things in an open public discourse and make some determinations, or we could end up like the United States in 1919 when we banned alcohol, a very successful experiment, I should say. So hopefully, as we go forward with the public discourse in this matter, we'll treat all of these pieces equally and with all of the knowledge that we have on all sides of the argument. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one thing.
Can you hold it for comments later? Let's get through.
Oh, okay. It's a part of my report.
Part of your report. Go ahead, Elsie.
Yes, I'm sorry. I messed up. The long-awaited report on deer management. We have been talking to the DEP and the Fish and Wildlife folks. We've had a meeting with them earlier this year in the spring. They came in and we had a wonderful conversation, but now they want to add other persons to the conversation. We're supposed to have a public, we were supposed to have this fall, a public forum. Unfortunately, we will not be able to have it this fall because they asked for more time to do some more research and to bring some more partners in. So, we were, we're going to be having the conversation, I think, maybe early next year. So I just want to keep you posted. However, during, in the interim, should you have any kind of deer incident, please go on the website and report it because we're trying to collect as much data as possible and then we will be ready to have an open forum to discuss the deer management, solutions to the deer management. Thank you.
Let me just add to that. So, so part of the reason that it's taking us so long to get the Fish and Wildlife folks here is they do want to be able to map out where there is some evidence of deer. So, I think the Borough Administrator and our Public Information Officer are working on a way where you'll be able to report not only incidents with deer, but just the fact that you're seeing them and where they are so that they can map out the presence of the deer here and then they'll be able to come and make a presentation on everything, you know, everything that we can do. We'll, we'll, we'll discuss it more. You can come up later at the public conversation part of this. So, just so you also know, we did first reach out to the county hoping that they would be able to help us with this situation, but they sent us over to the state and that's why this is still going on. I want to thank Councilwoman Foster Dublin and Borough Administrator Terry Hovier for their consistent work on this. It's not been an easy process for them and, as you all know, working with the state sometimes takes a longer time than we had hoped for, so, so thank you. Okay. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Well, if Elsie hadn't said that, I might have, might have blurted that out somewhere. Thank you. No, I just wanted to remind everybody, just drill down a little more on what Phil mentioned, which was Councilman George mentioned, that the bulk for the North Side and Triangle is tomorrow, Wednesday, and then South Side is Thursday and then garbage is up Friday because there was some confusion and we apologize for any communications, misfires, but we tried to get it out there as many mediums as we could. So just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. And Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I just have a few things. It's been a busy week and a half. I co-chaired a meeting of mayors in Middlesex County with the mayor from East Brunswick, Mayor Brad Cohen, to discuss shared services. And what became evident, the governor sent his two shared service czars to our meeting and what became evident was that we can not expect much funding from the state as we go forward. There are significant financial issues at the state level and so we are being asked to be creative with our own expenses. As you know, we have had shared services as part of our goals in stabilizing taxes here for years and have some shared services, but as a group of Middlesex County mayors, we will be looking further into some potential and the two czars that the governor sent to talk with us had some good ideas for us. We'll be meeting again and we'll keep everyone posted. I've asked Councilman Fein to join me on these meetings, so you'll hear more about them. I also had a wonderful meeting today with our faith-based leaders. My conference room was filled with representative rabbis, priests, and ministers from Highland Park. We had some very good discussions and out of it came something that I think will, will help us as a community moving forward in learning how to talk to each other in uncomfortable, about uncomfortable topics such as social justice topics, racial bias topics, racism, antisemitism, and, and other topics that affect our daily lives and I'm really thrilled to have this fine group of leaders join me in this. Last week, I had the privilege of attending a joint New Brunswick Arts Commission and our own Arts Commission and the Arts Coalition. What do they call themselves?
Collective.
The Arts Collective, in a meeting for the second round of Windows of Understanding, which Councilwoman Kim Cho Han had mentioned before. And we'll be bringing this again to Highland Park. This, this version of the Windows of Understanding will be pairing some of Highland Park's nonprofit groups with local artists who will interpret what these groups do in art forms for public art. Tied into this will be a discussion of not only Windows of Understanding and art as the focus of that, but also something we are calling Tables of Understanding, where in restaurants, we'll get groups of people together who don't really know each other to sit down and have some of these hard discussions. I'm really thrilled that Highland Park is participating with New Brunswick on this. As Councilwoman Foster Dublin mentioned, the teen center was opened. There's been some great programming going on over there. I was happy to learn that, from Ashton Burrell, who is the director of the center, that recently two young teens put together a business of their own to help seniors and others in town to help them by collecting their leaves for them. And that came out of a request from a senior resident who wasn't able to take care of the leaves herself. I mentioned it to Scott Brescher. He went and spoke to Ashton Burrell and these two teens just started their own business. So, already wonderful things are coming out of that teen center. I also want to thank the Police Department for their participation with our youth over there. Everyone seems to be really enjoying what's going on over at the teen center and the programming there. Also, lastly, want to thank our Councilman Phil George. If you ever see a man that you kind of, kind of looks familiar, but he's in work clothes and he happens to have trimming scissors with him and goes around Highland Park and helps people out by trimming trails and roads and passageways, the guy is Councilman George.
Anybody who walks from up along Brookline, back by the car wash, coming in out of Edison up to the shul on Saturdays or Sundays, knows that it was so overgrown you couldn't walk. DOT refused to do it because they said it was ours. DPW didn't have a crew to do it and said, "Well, why isn't DOT doing it?" So last Sunday, I did it with my crappy little residential lawnmower and residential string dreamer. There was no sidewalk. You couldn't see the sidewalk left anymore. It just needed to be done and it just, I like to push volunteerism. I do my Sunday meditation is to do volunteer work in the town, either at the sanctuary or the trails, but this was just begging to, to find the sidewalk that's really there.
So, again, thank you. All right. We're going to open our first open public comment session. This is limited to 15 minutes and each person who steps up to speak has three minutes to talk, so would you please line up? Okay. Please state your name and your address.
Sure. Hi. My name is Mara Carlin. My address is 620 Cranberry Road in East Brunswick, New Jersey. I wanted to thank Mr. Fein for asking me to come here. I'm the coordinator for Coalition and Community Programs at Wellspring Center for Prevention. If you've never heard of us, we do substance use prevention throughout all Middlesex County. We actually have an office in Monmouth as well, but our focus for the Coalition is Middlesex County. Our primary focus is reducing youth substance use in the community. So I know that there are a lot of feelings and a lot of sides to the marijuana issue, so I'm not here lobbying for either one. I just think it's important to hear some statistics about what's actually going on in Middlesex County. So we, there is a survey that's done every two years in Middlesex County called the Middlesex County Pride Survey. Over 5,000 students from Middlesex County are surveyed and asked about their perceptions of risk, their perceptions of substance use, and their own personal substance use. If you know anything about New Jersey law, it's very hard to get you to take a survey because we have something called active consent where parents actually have to sign off on it. So it's hard to get this information, but I think that it's important for you to hear some of the statistics that are actually happening in Middlesex County. So, from the 2016 and '17 school year, 60% of high school students perceive that marijuana is a low or no risk. So I heard you say before, talking about how our middle school students and our high school students are using marijuana and they are and we'll hear later, it's at an alarming rate. I think that the more access and the more availability marijuana is around, they're going to use it and that's scientifically what we know. Access and availability are the two reasons that not just youth, but people use. The more available it is, the more they're going to use it. And I can tell you from experience, being on the front lines, I do a lot of presentations. I work with youth on a daily basis and their attitude is, "It's benign and it can't hurt me and it's medicine and it's natural and there's no reason that even in my developing brain, it can hurt me." There was a study that came out last week from the American Academy of Psychiatry, which talked about how marijuana use in adolescents from 13 to 17 years old, their memory was affected and I just want to find exactly what they said about how marijuana was affected in four, in four ways. Their problem-solving memory, long-term memory, short-term memory, manipulation, and this is the one that gets me, the ability to stop visual behavior when needed. I work with people who are in recovery all the time. I work with people who have an active substance use disorder and a lot of it is about ritual and habit forming and it's hard to break that habit. So hearing that about youth marijuana use in teenagers really just affects me in a way because I work with them all the time. From the Pride Survey, 24% of 12th graders in Middlesex County used marijuana in the past 30 days. 24%. That's a lot. Our national average is 21% and that's from 2016 and 2017 and I'm going to assume, I don't know yet, but I'm going to assume that the number is probably higher because the perception of risk is lower because of what's going on in our state and the talk about legalization of recreational marijuana and how it's not, it's better than alcohol and I'll use it better than alcohol and that's what I'm hearing on the front lines. A couple more because I know I'm running out of time. 45% of high school students say it's easy or somewhat easy to get marijuana in their town. Back to what you were saying before, it's in our middle schools, it's in our high schools. Why are we going to make it easier for them to get it if it's in our town as well? So it's not banning marijuana if it's legalized in the state, it's banning the sale in your town. That, that's the ordinance that, that you would be looking at.
So just give us one more point and then you can come back up later.
You got it. Okay. So last one that I think, this is from Colorado. I'll give you some more stats from Colorado, too. But Colorado use in the past month for 12 years old and older is ranked third in the nation, but it's 85% higher than the national average. So what we, what we're seeing is that the states that have legalized medicinal or recreational marijuana have the top 15 tiers of youth who are using marijuana. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi. Please state your name and address. You can move it up or take it out.
Take it out. There we go. Hi. Dan Stern, Cardinal, Harbor Street. I want to respond to a couple of specific points and then make a general point on cannabis issues. So, on the specific thing, I'm going to go kind of fast, sorry. So first, on access to medical cannabis, I think we can all agree that's a net good just in general. That's something that should generally be available. Saying that, "Well, it's okay because, well, you can go 10 miles up the road and get it or go down to, what's it, Cranberry or Cranberry River," like, I don't think that, I don't think that cuts it frankly. You can get OxyContin from right in, right here and that's way more dangerous. Why in the world should we discriminate against patients that could benefit from medical cannabis, especially when... cannabis, especially when it can replace some of those more dangerous treatment options? So saying, well, you just go 10 10 miles up the road, I don't think that's an acceptable argument against it. What is easier to get illegally for teenagers? Is it cannabis right now or alcohol? Like, seriously, cannabis or alcohol? It's cannabis. Like, it far away. It's way easier to get cannabis because there's not a regulated legal market for it. Alcohol is way harder for the underage to get because there is a regulated legal market for it. So if we're worried about youth use, legalization for recreational cannabis is safer than for than prohibition. Now, we can also go through the health risks and the possible, and it's absolutely true that particularly in developing brains, it's going to affect memory, it could cause mental illness and problems down the road. All that stuff is absolutely true. But the question isn't pros versus cons of legalization, because legalization is coming one way or the other in New Jersey. That's not a decision Highland Park gets to make. The decision Highland Park has to make is, are we going to deal with the costs associated with legalized recreational cannabis? Or are we going to deal with the costs of legalized recreational cannabis and also get some of the benefits from it? Now, it's true that taxation for that market is not going to solve all of the problems. It's not going to single-handedly revitalize Main Street. But if that's the standard for any policy you want to implement, no policy is ever going to meet the solve all the problem standard. The question is, which of the two options facing us is a net good versus the other one? And I think the answer is pretty clear, that allowing legal regulated recreational cannabis in Highland Park is better than the alternative of prohibiting it in Highland Park when it's going to be allowed elsewhere throughout the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please state your name and address.
Barbara McLeithin. I live at 415 South Seventh Avenue. I'm here at Water and Sewer Bill.
Okay.
Okay. I have a bill for over $13,000. I, a tag was put on my door, apparently. I found it in the middle of the street. I came over here and asked them, what was it about? And they said, well, if you don't do anything about the leak in your house, it's going to be $6,000. I said, that's impossible because there's no leak in my house. I would hear it. I have a house that was added on, and the basement is so small. So it was originally a one one-bedroom house, and two bedrooms were added on with a bathroom and a family room. So I can go down and look through my whole basement because it's so small. They did not do a basement extension. I couldn't believe it. I went to New Brunswick to give my nephew to read the meter. I brought him back over the bridge. He says, yeah, Barbara. He called me out the window. You don't have a meter out here, so I can't read anything. So I said, well, they said it would be over $6,000, so come in the house and I'll figure something else. All right. Then I came over here, asked them, how come they didn't write me? And so they had something on my door that ended up in the street, across the street. I'm used to picking up papers from the kids. And that's how I discovered that it needed to be changed. And it was up this, she said it was going to be $6,000. Next thing I know, I get a bill for over $13,000. My regular bill before the raise was in the mid 40s, like 42, 43, and never went near $50.
So Borough Administrator, do you want to address this?
Well, this is something that we were going to be discussing later. And I, as I explained, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your last name. I remember Barbara. When you came in and we did talk, and I told you, I don't have authority to wave away, and without getting into all the details of your situation, but that what I was going to do was talk to council about your situation and possibly establishing a policy to address a situation such as yours. But we're, we haven't had that conversation yet. That's what we're going to be doing.
So we're going to be talking about it later today?
In a more general way, because as I explained, we have to look at it.
It's on the green agenda, and it was spoke about in finance.
So I, that's what I said, and you'd asked about the public meeting. I said, of course, you can come and explain your understanding of the situation.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about that.
But we're going to talk about it, just to be clear, as a general policy, so that it's a standard practice, whatever gets put into place, because we currently don't have an exception.
So, you know, what what we'll do.
Get up on the table, you'll see that's on the discussion.
Yeah, what we'll, what the Borough Administrator is, I think, trying to explain is, later, we have items, we go into conference, and we talk about items that we need to put on council meetings for the future. So that's one of the things we'll be talking about. You have an option of coming to that meeting, or we can have, make sure the Borough Administrator-
I can reach out to you after the meeting because I didn't have anything to report till I had that discussion with the council.
I'd rather come to the meeting because you told me, I gave you my number and everything. You said you were going to call me. You never called me. I came into your office, and you said, look at my desk, it's a mess. I must have misplaced it. I'm waiting four days, and I come in person to talk to you?
I apologized to you. I thought I thought I explained the process, and that's-
You didn't apologize.
Well, I apologize for not apologizing.
So 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 those, you know, we'll be talking about it later. So either you can stay in-
I'll stay.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Susan Slusky, and I'm at 309 North Fourth Avenue.
Oh, you have to talk really close to the microphone.
Pull it out.
How about this?
Oh, is the button, maybe the button is off?
Somebody clicked it.
Yeah.
Is it green anywhere?
Is there a button on the bottom?
I missed it.
Now it's on. Okay, here we go.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Susan Slusky. I'm at 309 North Fourth Avenue. It does have a green light.
It's on.
Just hold it really close. Sorry. Okay, how about this?
Better.
Yeah, better.
All right. Mike, should I start again with my name?
Loungely.
Joan got your name, I think.
They got your name.
Okay. And I'm, I'm concerned about the deer situation. I have a great many deer that live on my lawn. I have deer feces all over the lawn. I'm concerned about ticks. And so I was listening very carefully when you were talking about this report, and I wanted some clarification on what an incident is that I should report.
Basically, you say you have a large number of deer. So you want to know, where are they showing up? So obviously, you said your yard. We just want to, we're trying to gather as much data as possible to provide to the folks that fish and deer, the wildlife folks. So we can say, we see them, we have a cluster in this area, we see clusters in this area. People are, here's the report that we have been receiving about the sightings, or they're just showing up on people's property. Because to tell the truth, they're everywhere.
Right.
You know, you you walk out of this meeting, you go across to the police department over there, they're grazing everywhere. So every every time we open our door, we see them. We just want to collect as much data as possible to provide so they can come and do a thorough, they can do their research and give us proper findings. And then when we have the community meeting, then we'll be able to present.
So basically, it doesn't doesn't have to be like if somebody, a deer jumps out at you or anything.
Right.
Just the fact that you see a deer in your area.
So I should be going on to the Borough website and-
Yes, there is a-
To report every day when I see the deer. I can just say, they're here again, they're still here, still here.
More data, more data, more data.
You know, Borough Administrator, did we put it up on the website or?
Well, no, it's under, what I was going to suggest was reporter, use the reporter concern until such time that I can figure-
Okay, so on our website is a is a link for reporter concern.
Okay.
So just go on reporter for now, till they get it set up.
Yeah.
Go on reporter concern and say, I saw three deer on my lawn, my addresses, blah, blah, blah.
And the, let me, can I just add to, because I'll tell you a little bit more about what the fish and wildlife people were very interested. Because one of the things that I thought was interesting-
Terry, can you speak closer to the mic?
Sorry, me too. I'm guilty. One of the things that they were interested because Highland Park's kind of a unique town for them. A lot of the communities that come in have very high motor vehicle accidents because they have, you know, imagine 518 going through, you know, what's, 100 in county or whatever. You know, you can imagine those scenarios were really lethal accidents. Look at our data, thanks to the police department, you know, we have some accidents. We probably have a lot of close calls that don't get turned into accident reports. So what they were also very interested in, to get at your question, was the nature of the concern. So for example, I don't know, I've gotten a lot of them, you know, not standing on my lawn, not moving away, ticks, you know, feces, whatever you, whatever you say. Did we exchange emails? Was that you? Because somebody else had that same one. That's why I'm wondering if it was you. So the bottom line is, but you don't have to, every time you see one, you can just say chronically, on my lawn, every, most, most days of the week. You don't have to feel like it's your job to daily have to do that. Because then I can mark the map, and we're going to show kind of the distribution. And there, you know, I can already see where it's shaking out to some extent, based on what we've gotten so far. So, but that would, I'm trying to also impress upon the state that our residents really are concerned and do have, you know, and so the more we can, you know, show them, the better. So that's-
Well, if you're saying the more we can show them, does that mean that it would be better to have a daily report, they're still here?
I mean, we could. I just don't want you to feel like you have to do that. But yeah, I mean, if-
If you have the time and you want to do so, yes.
Get your neighbor. Susan, get your friends and neighbors.
Okay.
But 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 we really are looking at it, but it's, you know, because we're so small and tightly developed, you know, we just, our options are limited, and so they really want to walk into a meeting with us with as much information as possible. And that's what they've told me.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Please state your name and address.
We don't know you.
I'm more nervous over here than I was up there. My name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue here in Highland Park. I just wanted to state that, you know, as a, as a, as a resident and a taxpayer and a parent of a three, seven, and nine-year-old, that I do support legalized marijuana in New Jersey, as well as in Highland Park. I supported it when I went to the voting booth back in November, when Governor Murphy, who ran on legalizing marijuana, won in a landslide. I support legislation sponsored by Assemblyman Jamel Holly in the, in the assembly, as well as Senator Nick Skatari in the, in the Senate that legalizes recreational marijuana. I just wanted to point out that, you know, we can, we can always look at substance in the form of abuse, and I think prevention is incredibly important, and that we need to look at every, every way that we can to make sure that Highland Parkers, especially our youth, are protected and are safe and are, and are, and are educated about, about abusing any kind of substance. But I would note that the legislation outlines that marijuana legalization is available to those over the age of 21. So we're not, we're not, we're not really talking about youth here, and that there is a strong enforcement component in, in that, in any town. And I'm just wondering, you know, as I'm sitting here, well, first, as every councilman finds out, Ed, where in the process are we on this? Has this been vetted by the Public Safety Committee? Has this been vetted by the Health and Human Services Committee? Has this been, been vetted by the Board of Health? Has this been vetted by the Human Relations Committee, if we're looking at the criminal, the criminal justice component? Or the Public Safety Committee? Because if we haven't, then I'm wondering why we're even talking about it up here right now.
Well, we're not, we're not. Councilman Fine wanted to express his point of view.
Sure. So so I'm just wondering, though, as a, as a legislator, and as, you know, as in, 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 you know, as a, as a matter of governance, and as a seasoned veteran on the Borough Council, why we've chosen to hop over these important steps that every other initiative and every other ordinance goes through? I'm just wondering why this is, why what we're hearing now has not been vetted fully by the Borough Council, so the public can, can, can be fully engaged.
So thank you, Council, ex-councilman Hirsch.
Ex-councilman.
I would appreciate it.
I just want to let you know that we just, you know, had a discussion, and there is a process that we would be going through. Public Safety Committee, Health and Human Services Committee, the council would have to talk about it. Then it goes to economic development. So there is a process, as you're well aware. We just haven't started that process.
No, I understand. Well, no, I understand the process, and I'm just wondering why, why it's been usurped. And also, and also economic development. So, you know, has Main Street-
And municipal lines.
And the municipal lines. This marijuana legalization, marijuana legalization covers so many policy areas. There's so many silos that to, that to pigeonhole it in, in, in a, forgive me, but you know, kind of a fear, you know, in, in creating kind of fear when it's really about educating, really about educating the public, you know, raising concerns about the health, about the health issues, but knowing that people that are over 21 years old are making adult decisions that are available to them because it's legal. It's legal. We cannot be stigmatizing marijuana anymore if it's legal. There is no stigma. That's the whole point. You know, so that, that, that's, and I would love to see this go through the municipal process.
And the 15 minutes is over, and I thank you.
So, Mayor, if I could just address what Matt had to say. So, thank you, Matt. And as you know, Matt, as I started off my report, I said, the council has not discussed this yet. It's something we're beginning to discuss, and quite frankly, we know the process. You know the process, you've been on council. But I also know, and I think you know this as well, that while we are a team and we work together, right, and we want to come to consensus, at the same time, we are each individually elected, and we have a responsibility, each one of us, to, to speak to what we believe. And I think it's okay, totally okay, for anyone who sits up here to express their opinion on any matter. And it doesn't have to be go through three different committees, and we don't have to come out and show it or pretend as though everything is, we're in agreement on everything. I think it's okay from the beginning to take a stand, even if you, even if we disagree with each other, and have that stand. So, thank you.
So, so that's a discussion we can have amongst ourselves later on. Okay, let's get back to the, the conference, the council agenda. Clerk, could you please report on advertising an ordinance to require inspections and the issuance of certificates of continued occupancy for multi-dwelling and apartment buildings at the time of sale for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County requiring inspections and the issuance of certificates of continued occupancy for multi-dwelling and apartment buildings at the time of sale was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication or on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
I'm so moved. And can I just spend a moment? The issue here is that the state generally inspects these large apartment complexes, which, as you may realize, we have a lot of, and they usually inspect them once every five years. But they're running far behind. So the average is eight or more years. So we don't want to, we want to be able to inspect these buildings and ensure that our residents are safe and they're getting the services that they're, that they need and require. And therefore, we're going to be doing the inspections on a more regular basis at the time of sale. So this is going to include another layer of protection for our residents.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any public hearing? Please step up to the microphone.
Suzanne Arnie, North Sixth Avenue. The point of sale, you do mean if the building is sold, or if, I mean, literally, so how is that really going to help you on an eight-year cycle? Because I don't-
Well, we've just-
...see that the apartment buildings are sold that often, whereas-
Well, we've just had two large sales that are kind of pending or on doing that. So I think we are going to grab some of it. And some other towns have done the same thing because the state is running behind. And we just, you know, sometimes people live in these apartments for four years, and we don't have the opportunity.
When I heard this a month, or a month ago, whenever it's last meeting I attended, I thought it might have to do with condominium sales within a complex, like a unit sale, as opposed to the whole complex. So you're really saying that you would like to have the inspection when the building itself is sold?
When the building itself is sold, we would like, I mean, our code enforcement would like to go in and inspect, and not every single apartment, but a random sampling, because we're not doing that now. And the state is the only one party that's doing it now. And again, they're falling well, well behind.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? Motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of handicap parking ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residences occupied by handicap persons and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of fair share housing ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adding Chapter 86 Fair Share Affordable Housing to the Code of the Borough of Highland Park to address the requirements of the New Jersey Superior Court and the Mount Laurel Doctrine, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to separate out item number 25 from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Then Mayor, a move to remove and table number 26.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the items listed below from number 13 down to number 24 and then again, number 27 and 28?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 29, Chapter 159, New Jersey Urban and Community Forestry Stewardship Grant, may I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 29, Chapter 159, New Jersey Urban and Community Forestry Stewardship Grant, may I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jeez, I'm super it now. Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Item number 30, Chapter 159, HDSRF Grant, Rutgers Gun and Boat Shop, motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Just one moment. I'd like to thank Rosie Baru in the audience. When she was Chair of the Redevelopment Agency, we went out for these grants and we finally got the money. Thank you. And yes.
Thank you, Rosie, and your entire team. Okay, item number 31, HDSRF Grant, Innocent Street Vacant Lots, motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, item number 32, HDSRF Grant, Classic Cleaners, motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lost our enthusiasm. Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, tonight I would like to appoint the following. Ms. Irene Reigner to Sustainable Highland Park, Ms. Leanne Cosley Richardson to the Municipal Alliance, and Reverend Kermit Ross and Tammy Russ Fishbein to the Human Relations Commission.
Your Honor, just a moment. Irene Reigner to Sustainable Highland Park has been coming to the meetings for about three months. She's also a member of the Highland Park Arts Collective, very, very engaged, also an excellent photographer. Just note, at the last Sustainable Highland Park meeting, they actually started early on Earth Day and we had a discussion in which Irene was a part and the theme this year, thinking about Councilwoman Welkowitz's safe walking and cycling, as well as what the artists could do with a theme like this, will be people-powered.
Great. Okay, motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes. I'd just like to note that Leanne, because she's the Executive Director of the Teen Center and Municipal Alliance, is still one of the few boroughs, cities in New Jersey that's completing this intensive state grant. We've asked to team up with them to benefit the Teen Center in educating our youth with substance abuse.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk, would you report on the election of volunteer firefighter?
Received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Eric Torres Olivos to the roles of the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department. He was vetted by the Highland Park Police Department and signed off on.
Okay. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm and just to add, welcome Eric and that we are in need of more volunteer firefighters.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Last one. Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
All right, we're ready for our second public discussion. Please step up to the microphone. Maybe, maybe she can go right. Mrs. Bickard?
No, no, you're not going.
Go ahead, Mrs. Bickard. Please state your name and address.
Bruce Bickard, 307 Magnolia Street. Actually, a couple of questions. The shopping bags, I said this a long time ago, about 30 more years ago, my daughter was living in Cleveland, Ohio, and if you didn't bring your own shopping bag, you paid for it. And I think if you would charge for the plastic bags, you would eliminate a lot of that crap that's going into our trash. Pardon my vocabulary, but that's what I think it is. I take those plastic bags and I use them for my garbage.
Thank you.
And I'm concerned about the lack of sidewalk repairs. I think, I'm sorry, my memory of names is terrible.
It's okay. It used to be, Suzy.
I work with code. We're going to take a walk together. Just in my neighborhood, there are so many broken sidewalks. We're going into the winter, cold. You can't repair this stuff once it's cold. But I think, I see children falling.
So, Mrs. Bickard, did?
You want me to send you a list?
Yeah.
We'll do that.
You know, because that way we can send our code enforcement people out to take a look at it and address any of the issues that are there.
We'll do. My dog will be very happy.
But if you have some time Friday afternoon, I'd be happy to walk with you.
There you go.
How early on Friday?
What time's our meeting over, Terry? Not early.
Eleven, so I figure it's safe to say after 12:30.
Is that a good time? 12:30, 1 o'clock?
Yeah, between 1:00 and 2:00 would be fine.
1:00 and 2:00 would be fine? Okay, do we have, do we have her phone and address?
I have her address, I don't know her phone number.
Okay.
Well, you can fill in the phone book, by the way. It's never been changed, but I'll give it to you.
Okay.
You don't have to announce it on the record.
All right. I'll see you at 1:00. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Suzy.
I think we need some speed bumps.
So, there's mixed reactions to speed bumps. Lieutenant Hamill, would you like to give the police department's point of view on speed bumps?
We have had some issues with speed bumps and some of the ones that have been placed in town. And we have found through a study and watching that cars actually, it increases speeds on some of those streets. People have an inner, just a feeling that they're slowing down and we find that cars are actually speeding up between the speed bumps that is causing greater problems.
There is, there is evidence to that because the professor, Chris Abrupta, the professor at Rutgers, who came to speak with us about green spaces.
Yes. I'm an expert in this situation. Lieutenant Pennacella is our traffic team. Lieutenant, he has the studies and he works with Susie and a few of the other councilmembers of the block. He's our traffic officer, so I'm not the one that's the expert on it, but we do have some concerns. We have found issues that speed bumps are not as effective as people think that they are.
One of the things that we've done in certain areas is if some, if some residents ask, for instance, they'll write and they'll say, "We have children playing in the street, cars are zooming down our street." Sometimes we can get the electric sign that the police have put into the area and it's big, you know which one I'm talking about, and it tells people to slow down. We have signage also that says "Children playing" that we can put out in specific areas. So there are several traffic calming devices we can use besides the speed bumps.
My main concern is in my neighborhood. They're racing down the street, they don't stop where the line is drawn because they can't bring the car under control.
Well, and also they can't see around the cars parked on the corners.
That's true, too. I have one more thing. That's what I'm going to add.
Thank you, Mrs. Bickard. Would you like to continue your presentation?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just going to talk a little bit more, but first I just want to address my friend in the back who made note about alcohol and I just want to put it out there that alcohol is not only the most abused drug, but also the most accessible drug, so the fact of the matter is.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Councilman.
Go get a lung, get a lung.
Okay, okay.
You don't think it's very abused? It's really abused. No?
Okay, good. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, excuse me, we're not, we're not. Would you like to speak or not?
Yeah, I do. Okay. So, anyway, what I want, what I really want to say is that obviously there are lots of sides to this issue and it's not just a cut or dry about recreational legalization or medicinal legalization. It's about, in my opinion, it's about our youth and it's about public safety and it's about public health and how you want to see your town and there's a lot to think about. And I'm coming from a public health standpoint, I'm coming from a youth standpoint, I'm not coming from a tax standpoint. I don't know about taxes and how the, and how the taxes work, but I know as somebody who's in public health and who deals with youth all the time, the more accessible it is, the more that they're going to use it. So alcohol is readily available in our homes. Most homes that you go into have alcohol, have alcohol accessible, and it's going to be the same with marijuana and, you know, selling it in your town is something that you need to decide as a council, but it's not, it's not a black or white issue and it really should be up for discussion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Dan Stern, Cardinal, Harper Street. With regard to the alcohol versus cannabis issue, the question there is whether the cannabis use is in addition to alcohol or substituting for alcohol use. And the data on that, we don't have a whole lot of data because legal recreational cannabis hasn't been around for all that long in the U.S., but the data we have are pretty equivocal, leaning towards substitution rather than use in addition to. And then the question becomes, what are the social costs associated with the two substances? And on that question, there really isn't a question at all. Alcohol is a much, much higher social cost for use at all ages than alcohol use and abuse. So on that question, again, 20 years from now, we're going to have much better data on that question, but right now, it leans towards substituting rather than use in addition to, which is a point in favor of recreational legal cannabis, not a point against. But on a, on a kind of larger scale look at this, this is at its heart, more than anything else, a social justice issue. Prohibition by design for its entire existence has disproportionately affected non-white and poor communities, again, by design, through incarceration, through voter disenfranchisement, and through unemployment due to incarceration and other encounters with law enforcement. Legal regulated cannabis is an opportunity to undo some of the injustices that are the result of this policy going back now for over a century. When we passed, last year, when we passed the Open and Inclusive Community Resolution, did I get the name right? Was that right? I think it was Open and Inclusive Community. The debate in this room, and most of the board is still the same, the debate in this room was whether or not that resolution went far enough to address the challenges that we're facing right now as a community and as a country. Was that all just talk? Or are we actually interested in making this an open and inclusive community? Or are we going to let fears over potential future harms prevent us from addressing past and ongoing injustices right now that legal regulated cannabis could help address? We should embrace this opportunity as a matter of economics, for the tax base, as a matter of public health, and most importantly, as a matter of social justice. Thank you.
Could I just make a quick comment as, well, on the resolution that you spoke of, as I mentioned at the beginning in my report, we actually think that the resolution that was passed earlier was in need of some improvement. So there will be some additional opening inclusive language in a resolution coming forward. And I just also wanted to say thank you very much for your speaking tonight.
Hello, Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. I composed myself when I left the room. First, I'm really happy to hear that the Inclusive Communities Resolution is being improved upon. That's great. That's great. Thank you for, for your work on that. Second, you know, I'm not comparing, I, I'm not prepared, nor is the community prepared to have this type of debate in this setting. And I think it's really irresponsible for my borough council to have begun this debate in, in public about this really complicated, nuanced, multi-dimensional issue. And you know, when we talk about, I, I, I understand...
Correction, it's not the council, it's a, it's a council member.
I understand, I understand. But, and I understand substance abuse, too. I've dealt with it. I've, I've been sober for four years, you know? I have, I've had family members and friends who... Believe me, I understand. And I, and at the same time, I fully, fully support legalizing marijuana in, in Highland Park and in New Jersey. So I don't think that you can point to other subs...
Well, honestly, I'm quite...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Okay, so we have to keep, if you want to speak again, you can...
I don't think, I don't think, we should never lead any policy with fear of, of, of the worst consequence or the worst outcome. Because that's not, that, 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 you can, you can make the case against any policy, you know, using, using that logic. The same thing with, with the Inclusive Communities Resolution. The, 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 the people who are opposed to it use the most frightening tactics to, to, to rally against it. And I just don't think that there's enough evidence. And I don't think, and I, I'm not prepared to question the wisdom of the governor and the legislature that supports this and to, 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 to buck their wisdom in Highland Park. And if we are going to do that, then it needs to be properly vetted through, through a very public process.
So, so Matt, I just want to make it clear that the, I nor the council had any intention of having this discussion begin. It began with Councilman Fine's letter to the editors of all the newspapers. And so, once it became public, the discussion started. However, there is a, there is a process, as you are well aware. And it will go through the committee, committee process. All the committees that are involved, it will come back to the council for further discussion. It's going to go to the public for an open discussion when we know what we're talking about. But right now, there's no firm answer on exactly what the legislature is, legislation is going to look like. I, I will say, I, I will, I will say, the problem I have with the legislation is that it only gives 2% of the taxes to the municipalities. And we're the ones that are gonna have the expenses in code enforcement, police enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. That's my concern with the legislation. I, and, and I would let anybody know that. And I have already, and so have, you know, at least 30 other mayors from this area.
If I may, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. And I should note that I'm glad to see you back. We had some of the more spirited debates between you and I that council has seen for a long time, in particular, on the open and inclusive. And I think at one point, I, I think I told you, you were too conservative and I was getting too radical. But I think what, what the process is, is, at this point, is some hurry-up, plug-the-dike comments. The process of discussion, as I said before, involves a number of parts. And it will take place in the public discourse, through public meetings, through discussion, through information gathering. And we won't, and neither side, nor the pros nor the cons, will be, will be rushed to judgment, much less encouraged to do so in this process.
Hi, I'm Abby from Harper Street. So, three things. First of all, I left with the baby and came back without a promise she was being watched.
That was the first thing that went through my mind, who is with that baby?
Second of all, with regard to the session that's being had, it was also posted on Facebook. And similarly, there were a lot of comments that expressed concern in the words that you posted. And I think, you know, just because they're not here today doesn't mean that they weren't expressed. And the public definitely has a lot of concerns about what you said. Third of all, on an unrelated note, I have a question that I don't think has been brought up for probably a long time. So, a couple of questions. First of all, has there ever been fluoride in the water in Highland Park? When was this last revisited? And what is the process for fluoridation of the water? And then I have a follow-up question.
So I can tell you, when I first came onto council and I had Health and Human Services, the discussion was being held at that point. And that goes back to 20, 2009. And at that time, the Board of Health had asked that we look into fluoridization of our water. The Middlesex Water Company, which is our water supplier, said that unless we, they, other municipalities that share in their water also wanted to do this, it, it was a very expensive proposition for us to do it alone. I don't know since then if it's been discussed, but several council members have, have had that.
Several council members have gone to Middlesex Water. And I guess you were in '09, so maybe I was in 2011.
Yeah.
Middlesex Water at the time, in 2011, said they could build a pump house for us to fluoridate our water, but it would cost us $500,000.
Okay, so, a couple of follow-ups. I actually called and emailed the Middlesex Water Company. I got conflicting answers. So it was just, one person on the phone, I'm not sure knew what they were talking about, said that they didn't have input into the water, so that... And then the person who did email me back told me that there is no consensus among various towns. I think it is worth discussing with other towns. Public health officials do agree that this is an issue of public health and that is very important for, you know, our community. It is, you know, it, it basically has zero downsides. It's an issue of public health that we should be taking on. Maybe there are, you know, we talked about shared services. Maybe this is something that can be brought up again with other towns who are provided by, you know, the waters provided by Middlesex Waters.
So here's my suggestion. It would be good if Abby could come to a meeting of the Board of Health.
Absolutely.
Matt Hale now has, what do you...
She's like, I don't know.
I can't.
I would alternate on the Board of Health, but I can never go to the meeting.
You know what, I would be happy to take, I would have it have a discussion with you and bring this directly to the Board of Health. And we can have a discussion at the Board of Health about these issues.
Okay, I think it's really important.
That's a good place for it to start.
Right, I think it's a great place to start. So if you could just, after the meeting, let me know and we'll, we'll have a little chat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Any other public comment? Okay.
One more.
Oh. Yeah.
Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. Hi, everybody. I'll try to go as quickly as I can. Speed bumps? Yeah, Edison was removing most of the big speed bumps when we were installing them around 2007 or so. And if anyone, Ms. Ruth left, anyone who is near a speed bump at home and hears the landscapers take their trailers or the boggers going down to the park at 15, 25 miles an hour, you do not want speed bumps. Whatever else could be, maybe...
Well, is anybody who lives on North or South Second totally agrees with you that they were the worst things we ever put in?
It's bad, it's bad.
Also Lincoln.
And Lincoln?
Yeah.
Okay. Oak trees, I'm jumping to deer and ticks. Ticks are in everything. Ticks are, Lyme disease ticks are in Hawaii, in Alaska. They didn't swim over, they weren't transported. They are on every animal, birds and squirrels. I had Lyme disease, I did the research 25 years ago. What we're doing is encouraging the white-footed mice because they eat the acorns and we plant oak trees. Those are the incubators for the Lyme disease ticks and the deer are one of the carriers. And if you want deer, just walk from the train tracks down to Donaldson. They're in my backyard brewery lane, behind the gun shop, wherever there are trees, behind Montgomery Apartments. And when we tell people to have bird feeders, that's what they go after. Two of my bird feeders have been broken because they eat the bird seed and they're starving. And they have eaten the cats' meat, chased the cats when they were starving. Grandma Lucy especially, emaciated. So, it, it started, I mean, we were here in 1975. I didn't see any deer until Kaplan and Parker expanded on River Road. The deer were chased out of that part of the preserve or those, that part of the Kaplan Castle, through the tunnel, and they won't go back. So they're here. Whatever, there are a lot of them, but they're harmless, except if you run into them. Okay, pot, running to pot. You know, cigarettes. For a long time, there was a little piece of paper on the side of a cigarette pack, warning, blah, blah, blah. Well, thank goodness television has these horrible disgusting ads, which I mentioned to Fern when she, Fern Goodheart, Fern, former councilwoman, when she was doing some sort of grant meeting I was at. I said, "Why the heck don't you sell the catalog with parts, body parts? So people who smoke and, and rather than chew gum, a new tongue, a new jaw, a new something." Anyhow, then all of a sudden, these great disgusting ads started. Show the kids what they look like when they're stupid and they're forgetful. I mean, you need videotapes or whatever is on these computer things to show the kids, this is what you do look, or your cohort looks like when they're stupid and forgetful, like an Alzheimer's patient, like a senior citizen. I wanted to ask about Buck Woods. Do we own it yet with all these resolutions we've had since 2015, 2017? This year, 1.86 million? Do we own Buck Woods or is it just a scare tactic to stop the trees from coming down?
No, we don't own Buck Woods.
So what is the resolution of 1.86 that was passed early September? With those block and lots? September 3rd?
Now, Lois, that ordinance was passed a number of years ago when there was consideration of two things. One, a possible condemnation, either as part of a land swap or not as part of a land swap. The bill that was passed, the ordinance that was passed recently was an amendment to that original ordinance. The ordinance name can't be changed. So it is always gonna have that lot and block, no matter how many times we use it. But that, that money since has been targeted for elsewhere, for economic development, also for the teen center. Because it doesn't just say Buck Woods. The ordinance that was passed a long time ago actually talks about capital improvements. And it can only be used for such types of capital improvements.
Right, oh, so now I know what you're talking about. It's a, it's a bond, it's an ordinance that allowed us to go out and set up a bond for the purchase of properties.
Right, but you didn't purchase it?
No.
And then you added 5 million for the teen center and then that's been...
No, 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 no. No, we didn't add 5 million for the teen center. We added 5 million for purchases of properties for redevelopment. So, for instance, the borough bought the building that Main Street is in. With that part, not with a small part of that bond, I can't remember the purchase price right now. It's three something.
325,000.
Very good, 325,000. But it's, 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 it's a bond that, that is there to allow us to buy property for economic development.
Right, the former, the former master plan, when Nolan and Merrill was mayor, said that no borough funds will be used for redevelopment. And then there was an ordinance that changed that under your guidance. So now you're using taxpayers' money to buy redevelopment property?
If an opportunity comes forward that would help us for economic development and improve our tax base, yes. Do know that the next, the 2020 master plan will, they'll start working on that in 2019. And that is being chaired by former Mayor Steve Nolan from the Planning Board.
Okay, so Buck Woods is, is a done deal that we're not buying and it will be developed and the trees will continue coming down?
I don't know how to answer that. That is in Borough Attorney, how would you answer that question?
Well, the mayor indicated we have not purchased Buck Woods and we, and there's no intention to do so. Right now, no more trees are coming down until a concept plan is submitted by the owner of the property to detail what they would like to do with the property. We should get that concept plan probably in another several weeks. And then we'll go back to court. But right now, the tree removal, thanks to the residents that live nearby, has been stopped.
Okay, good. Thank you. Talking about deeds. Years ago, not too many years ago, you used to be able to go here to the Tax Water Department when Annie and Anita were here and ask for a copy of your deed or pay for a copy of your deed and house record, the card, the house record. Now, it's, you have to go in the basement, find, find the right person, when he's here, and make an appointment. Can these magic machines be utilized by the other workers upstairs, too?
So first of all, don't call it the basement, that's where my office is. It's, it's the first level. First level, okay? But Borough Administrator, can you address that?
I, I don't exactly know. Deeds I thought were with, I just emailed someone coincidentally today who was asking about where she could get a copy of her father's deed. And there's actually an online portal that Middlesex County has that you can... Yeah, so I don't, I'm not familiar with the old way. I wasn't here down in the little first level.
It was upstairs.
So we don't have those, those records, according to the clerk, anyway, any longer. But Middlesex County makes it available online. And if that's a hardship, you can certainly call Middlesex County and ask them for what your options are. I'm not familiar...
Well, how about just the house record, then, with the bathrooms and the, if you wanted to buy?
Oh, what the, that would be an assessor's office question. We now have a part-time clerk down there, so we have the offices open more frequently. I can't think of the, her hours off the top of my head.
And I went down whenever I was sent down paying taxes, maybe in August, and...
She, she wasn't an employee yet. He, he's all, he was all by himself. And now we have a part-time clerk down there who could help you with that kind of request.
But not up here?
No.
Tax, tax collector?
They're different, it's a different software program.
Okay. Totally different. And the, the town has the nice public trash cans that dog walkers use. We are able to utilize. But if a bottle and other things which happens get underneath that black liner that the DPW guys emptied, the neighbors are really tired of emptying, taking out the black liner because then the lid doesn't close, the swing lid. And, and so the neighbors have to clean out the bottles and the trash that's gotten under the liner, the can liner. Can that be added? I don't, I know DPW...
Phil, you want to discuss that with Public Works?
Yeah, I'll put the, I usually have Friday morning meetings, early in the morning, with DPW every week or two. And I'll put that on the agenda for the next one. I noticed a couple in the last couple of days and one this morning as well. That, so I was gonna mention it to them in a more general sense. But we'll ask specifically about the liners and the, and the way to, to perhaps engineer cleaning them out and restarting from that. Because I noticed some of them are also pitched off to the side a little bit, one way or another. Either they settled or they got hit by a car. And as a result, trash is gathering underneath it, even, separate and apart from whether there's a bag in it or not.
Oh, yeah, the liner. Okay, I think the last thing. The weather was wonderful for the arts fair that was, whatever, September. I just wonder if, if that huge lighted sign was up a few days, a few weeks ahead of time telling travelers that Route 27, the art fair would take place with the date, so they might avoid, like Rutgers used to put, avoid traffic, avoid the, the day was gonna be scheduled?
It was there.
It was there.
We, we do advertise that and usually, that message works. It becomes a, kind of a hot commodity. A lot of, a lot of people ask to use it, put messages up. It's a great way to get messages out. So we do, if you notice, it always changes. We always have different things advertised. So we try to do it about a week before the art festival, the 4th of July. We always put it out there about a week before. We give people about a week and send out the mixel. So we also notify them, CTC, the New Jersey 12, and everything about the road closings, how they get that message out. I can't say for sure, but we do notify them.
Well, I'm gonna suggest that if there are two signs, certainly there should be two signs posted. But if, when you, when something else occurs, to have Route 27 South diverted onto Dennison Street and also the vendors lined up on Dennison Street, that was a huge bottleneck. I heard an employee say, "This is nuts. They're backed up on Route 27." The vendors couldn't get out third until the traffic stopped on 27 and 27 couldn't be diverted onto Dennison because they were filled with vendors in every direction.
So Lieutenant, are you involved in the planning?
Sergeant Cabello and Lieutenant Pannacella, Traffic.
Yeah.
Normally, we plan that. I can mention it to them to see if we can come up with something different. But again, limited roadways and one way in and out. We are going to expect some traffic problems. But we'll, we'll try to do the best we can, try to ease that.
Right.
I just would add, I happened to be volunteering that morning for Main Street, checking in the merchants. And we did see the lines. And I was brainstorming with Rebecca Hirsch, who is the executive director, and some of the other volunteers, and the officer, I can't remember who was on duty. We were talking about ideas for next year, so your point's well taken.
My suggestion is North 8th. Let's let the vendors meet on North 8th. I was just at the wonderful Romans, the VNA up in Far Hills. Every vehicle, when you're, we're working there before the sales, has to have this in their windshield, in their window if they, they're a vendor. If the vendors went straight ahead at North 8th or lined up on 8th, came out and they were, we went on to Route 27 and the third traffic was in the right lane to turn onto Fifth, North Fifth, to go to Dennison, it might be a little smooth. It would take an officer probably to direct traffic there around at 8th. But, and my other thought was if, if this said vendor and said N or S, north side, like where Century 21 is, I don't know what the details are of the street fair, what's the requirement. But any vendor, if there are 60 spots, then just get in line and take the first one down and second and just keep backing up. Don't have specific spaces. Now, the artists might not be happy with that. But if the south side has the electric and those have to be reserved spaces numbered, anyhow, it would go a lot faster. But if you have this...
We actually got everybody in in an hour, not including the backup that you're referring to. So I, you know, but there's room. So, interesting ideas.
Yeah, and there are ways to do street fairs that are a little bit quicker. I don't know that you have to have a program, but that's just me. Oh, and, and if you could ask neighbors to please take their, residents, to take their cars off the street so there would be more parking for the visitors? Or ask a neighbor who has a larger driveway if they could pull into the, off the street so that there would be more parking? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? If not, may I have a motion to, oh, excuse me. Are we going into exec session on any, no, okay?
Yeah, we wanna talk, we have an item.
We do, okay. Then may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
No, we can't go to executive. We have the issue from...
How does that work?
Okay, so we're gonna...
So we're gonna do open, public, then, executive.
Yeah, we'll do public, then, executive.
Yeah, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into the remainder of our conference agenda, finish with that, and then go into executive.
Yes.
So moved.